It is now ten oh three, we're back from our recess. And at this time, we have a ten oh three timed item nuisance concern. A Northlake citizen, Winfield Schoolcraft. So, Mr. Schoolcraft.
Okay. This is Mr. Schoolcraft, this is Mr. Corillo. Corillo's the one that owns the property we're talking about. You're welcome to sit up here, as welcome as you can.
Now, how do you spell, is that on here?
Yeah.
Corillo, you're saying Corillo?
Is that, am I saying that right?
Right.
Yeah. I don't know what I'd say, correct?
Well, it's, the property owner listed here, I call it O-R-A-R-O.
Corillo, yeah, right.
L-O-E-R-A.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. And it's Ted.
Ted.
They do have copies of all of your pictures from your CD that you sent me?
I, um...
Well, you gave it to Aileen, and Aileen gave it to me, so they have all those pictures.
Okay. Now, there's a few more pictures, and, um, but I'll hand you each one of these that has photographs of the evidence in it. And then I, I have a CD.
Yeah, we have this CD.
We have all those, Winfield. We, we have this as well, but that's fine.
Yeah, well, this has a slight change in it.
Okay.
And that is, uh, in the second paragraph.
I think you have some personal information here that you probably...
No, that's evidence.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
And, uh, okay. Dakota and Kaylee, that's the two young people, in the second paragraph, were notified in person by Aileen Harmon. And in the one you got, uh, it's my understanding that they got a, uh, a notice like Ted did in the mail, that they didn't, they were notified in person by her, and then, and then, uh...
Thank you, Winfield.
Mm-hmm. And, and then Ted, Ted notified them that he was intending on cooperating with the county, and they had to leave. I think I spelled that pretty...
I, I've read your letter. Uh, I have one question for you, can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
I just want to be a little clearer, that it's been a little confusing to me, your desire, while we really are appreciative that you're before us today, but your desire today on what you're wanting to accomplish, if this fits with what we can help with. I, I just want to understand that a little bit better.
Okay. Ted is probably close to being the best friend I got here.
Mm-hmm.
He's got a good heart, like so many there don't have, and, uh, and I'm a senior citizen also, and, uh... Okay. Now, these have documents in them that, uh, that I would point to.
Want me to take those up there?
Oh, you want that job?
I'm sure, and that's what I'm here for, to do, to help.
Thank you, Jen.
The deputy didn't think that the littering and the refusing to leave were, were criminal acts, but Ted's a senior citizen, and because I was helping Ted, Dakota, the, the boy, he was, he, he might be seventeen at the moment, uh, had, uh, challenged me, and he writes about his own, um, expertise, and, uh, I write better than I talk, 'cause I, I can take a week's writing. And, uh, he, he dragged by his own martial arts and challenged me. Now, he's, well, until he turns eighteen, I'd be arrested for beating up on a minor, but I'm too old to beat up on this kid, he's, he's probably physically more able than me. And, uh, so, in this last one we handed you, is senior and elder abuse, all right? Now, down here, there's a, it's called, and it's called, uh, there's a section on criminal mischief about, uh, vandalizing property and misconduct on the property, and that's ORS one six four three four five. And, uh, some of the others might apply also, but, uh, the deputy said, no, they're not criminals, but this, but the ORS statute, the state statute, uh, they might be borderline, but it, it refers to criminal mischief. And, uh, and senior abuse is, I mean, if they don't, if they don't get an adjustment to their thinking, they'll, they'll be, as they get older, they'll get their, their willingness to, to trespass and, uh, and, uh, senior abuse, and, uh, anyway, they're, they will end up being a greater problem than what they, what they might appear to be. And, uh, and, and there's, uh, other pages in here, there's littering, offensive littering, and, uh, all of the pictures that, uh, that you sent was on property adjacent to the one they were living on, and it was their, and it was their garbage, 'cause the other properties were covered with a sagebrush, and nobody was, was living on them. And, um, and there's, let's see, I used to, I used to be in front of a classroom all the time, but that don't mean I don't have a little nervous condition right now.
No problem, Winfield. But, I'm just, what I want to do, Winfield, is figure out how can we, as the Board of Commissioners, help you and help Ted, that's within our, our purview, preview of, of authority.
Well...
And I'm a, I'm a little concerned, and I'll let you speak again here, but I'm a little concerned that some of the things that need to happen, other than the nuisance, which is, you know, that, that's dealt through our, our department with the landowner of record, but the other things you're speaking about, and I know you've had discussions with Deputy Rourke, but I did reach out to Sheriff Taylor when he informed the two of us that he wouldn't be here today, he's gone this week, as well as under Sheriff Havel, but Sheriff Taylor shared with me yesterday that if I could get your contact information, he'll be back Friday sometime, he would like to talk to you about what he can do from the law enforcement side...
Okay.
...of things, or talk to Ted, I mean, it's Ted's property, so, you know, it's kind of a interesting balance here, you're here as a good friend of his, but he's, he's the one that, that is the legal standing individual here in this. So, I, I just wanted to put that out there, that, you know, what I'm hearing, what, I read all this before, I read it a month ago when you first sent that letter to Aileen, and she shared that with us, that, Commissioner, jump in any place that you think I'm off base here, but...
You're doing good.
There's, you know, there's, uh, a civil issue with Ted's land and people being on it, and then there's the, the, uh, illegal occupancy, and I don't know how that works, but those all happen through a court of law, and they happen through a law enforcement agency, but we want to help, but I'm not real clear on how we're going to be able to help as commissioners versus the sheriff of Lake County and the court of Lake County.
Okay.
So...
Um, I'm, I'm not, uh, I'm not really great with paperwork. This here is what the sheriff, sheriff likes to, all right.
I think they may have a copy of this in their handout, but I'll give it to them.
No, no, that one's, that one I didn't save, Liam, maybe?
No, I think Aileen might have had a copy of it, because it's highlighted in there.
Yeah, I, I gave her a copy. Now, this is, this is the front page to the evicting a tenant, but there weren't any tenants on my property, there wasn't any residents on my property, it was squatters and camp trailers. And, uh, and right at the top, uh, it says residential, and then, and then down below, it, it, it has a list of things that that form shouldn't be used for, and one of them is squatters. Now, now, squatters, and all those things listed below, has an ORS statute that, that can evict them or take care of them immediately, 'cause they had no contract to be there. And, uh, and the form that Rourke wanted us to use listed with a pre-chant, that maybe they did have a contract to be there, and, and Ted would have to pay day money to the state court to, um, to get that started. But there are ORS statutes, and that's why I give you, give you this, that would have taken care of them instantly without the ten-day waiting period. And, uh, and I think, uh, I don't know, I never met the sheriff, and, uh, I don't know what his policies are, and Rourke thinks he was operating according to the sheriff's department policies, and he's, and he's a, he's a great guy, except when he was, he'd been a peacemaker to the, um, those, those who were propagating the criminal mischief and the, and the criminal trespass, and, and that's, that's also... Rourke, Rourke didn't like the calling that, that part criminal. I got a lot of hate, I guess.
Well, Winfield, I, I believe whenever Sheriff Taylor's able to meet with you, I think a lot of this will be resolved. Commissioner Shown says, I think, just looking at this, these people trespassed onto Ted's property, correct, with the, the trailer, the car, and all the garbage?
Yes.
The trailer and the car, even though I don't see no license plates on them, they have VIN numbers, and it'll be very easy for them to run those VIN numbers and find out who truly owns those.
Yeah.
And that should be able to prove trespass, and so they have to go through their process on the criminal side, on the law enforcement side, to be able to prove that there's trespass. Your word is very good, but they're, they got to do their investigation side of it, and so, uh, the work Commissioner Shown has done to align the sheriff when he gets back in town to visit with you, right now, I believe is the absolute correct avenue for us to go in for you also.
So, you know...
So, this, this, this will be my proposal, and you're sure willing, or welcome to share more information, but I'm going to turn to Jen now, and I'm going to ask you to provide her with your contact information. She will have all of this information, and she will give it to the sheriff when he comes back.
Yeah.
He said, from our conversation yesterday, if you'll get me that contact information for Winfield, I will make contact with him. He will have all the information about what's been going on, you've written it all up, you've got pictures, et cetera, and she'll hand that to him, and we'll see how that works out for you and Ted when he gets a hold of you. He may even drive up there to see you.
He, he may not know it, but he's got everything already, and since I've been challenged by a healthy teenage, teenager, I applied for a concealed carry permit, and I spent an entire year, I mean, I could be, I could be a deputy on in force and probably be the best educated, because for a whole college year, I did the major for my, for my college at the police academy section of the college campus, and, uh, and he's got it now, uh, we should make sure that...
Now, are you saying the sheriff actually has it, or the deputy has it? The, the, it's not going to hurt for him to have it again, but he needs to know, he needs to know how to get a hold of you and Ted.
Right, we'll have to give it to him again.
Yeah.
I, I have a comment, I, I support everybody that's legal or concealed carry and all that, Winfield, but your first avenue is nine one one. If somebody's threatening you bodily harm, phone nine one one. Yes, we're a large area, make that call, that's the first and foremost thing that you do, is nine one one.
I listened to observe, and, uh, and I did report the, the new trash on, on the ground by telephone, not by nine one one, but to the sheriff's department.
The, the new trash isn't a nine one one call, but if somebody's threatening bodily harm, that is a nine one one call.
Right. I've had a, I've had a, uh, well, Dakota's mother was interested in a house that I was wanting to sell, that is, I wanted to get rid of it so bad, they could have all my equity, which was the, the price of the lot, the price of the subject system installed, and, and several years of payments made, and she signed and notarized papers, and, um, and, and she, she wasn't an honest person either, and, um, she, she stayed one month, moved up, left me whole leave a bag for what she had agreed to take care of, and I was being quite, I thought I was being quite generous, giving them all my, one hundred percent of my equity, but, uh, but, well, there is a kind of a person that always hates the landlord, and this, and that's this family, and Dakota, uh, had a grudge against me, 'cause his mother was, I mean, this isn't, this isn't about Ted's case, but this is, this was something separate.
Yeah, you had me thinking, when you started saying landlord, there, it's putting us into a whole, but that's a whole different thing. This piece of property was never rented, never, no agreements, no nothing of Ted's property.
Right.
Okay.
Now...
Law enforcement is where it came to be.
Yeah.
Yep.
Ted's son may, may have verbally discussed the possibility, but nothing ever came to Ted to approve it. And, um, let's see. I should probably just, see, I have the originals to the pictures that are in the, in the, um, in the first paper you were handed.
Well, I want to talk, I'm going to change gears on you a little bit here, on the nuisance side of it, as long as you're making some progress and working with us, we're working with a soft hand, so take that stress off of you. When this starts getting resolved on the legality side of it, so Jennifer will be the one, um, on the nuisance side of it, we're not wanting to go in there and do anything immediately, this one's unique, so, unless I'm wrong, Jen, you speak up if I'm talking out of school. We, we want to do this with a soft hand and work with you on it, not against you.
Yeah. But Ted's seventy-one, and, and in about three days, I'm going to be seventy-nine.
Well, congratulations on that.
Yeah, happy birthday early.
And all of this, all of this, uh, anyway, it's, it's senior abuse when, when Ted is responsible for cleaning up everything they left behind. Now, now, I realize you're probably not going to get him to clean anything up, and if he had a summons to appear in court, he'd probably bail and leave the county, and, um, and, and then he was informed, well, Ted informed him that he had ten days to leave, according to the paperwork Ted got, and, uh, he stayed three times as long, over three times as long, and just, and he was, I believe he was playing observe. Uh, he'd get it up so much junk, like, that, that time.
Well, you know, that, that part of it, and looking at the pictures and, and hearing about it, that, that's so incredibly unfortunate, but I think, Jennifer, Jennifer, please jump in here if I misspeak, the only one that our county ordinance can apply to is the person who actually owns the land.
Yeah.
You know, these other issues, we'll just kind of restate it again, they're a law enforcement issue for what those individuals who did not own that land have done to Ted's, to Ted's land, to his property. We, in the nuisance side, and in the commissioner's side, we can only work with the landowner on the issues.
Yeah.
So, I, I'm really hopeful that, that the sheriff, in meeting with you, will give Ted specifically, and I understand you're both kind of connected, or because of your friendship, but Ted is the, the owner of the record.
Yeah, but legally...
Will give him the satisfaction of what's going to happen, that he desires, that, that's all I know I can do.
Yeah.
And, as Commissioner Winters said, and Jennifer, I think, would agree with, our whole new updated nuisance ordinance is intended to work with people. It's not to bring some sledgehammer out of the, the storage room and hammer on someone, it's to work with folks. While I understand both of your ages and your abilities to do cleanup on Ted's property that he didn't create, he is the owner, you know, we, we, we didn't create it either, and maybe the sheriff can get some, some satisfaction for Ted and how he deals with the people who did do it. I, I don't know, I, I don't know.
Now, um, the deputy is a, is a peacemaker, right? I mean, he's one of the few deputies that's truly a peace officer, but he was granting peace to the wrong people in this situation, 'cause of, and that I'll have to take up with the sheriff himself, I guess.
That, that sheriff is his supervisor, so he will, he will recognize when he talks to you two, and perhaps out on site, he will recognize what he, as the sheriff, needs to be relative to that.
Yeah. Right now, he's got my application for a concealed carry permit.
Well, we'll go back to the office, and I'll clarify that I have your correct information, okay?
Okay.
And get that.
Okay? Well, we'll hope for a good resolution on this.
And thank for your travel here today to Seth, to Forest, and...
Well, thank you very much. I was having trouble, a bit of trouble this morning.
No problem, Winfield. You two travel safe, okay?
Thank you very much.
Okay.
We'll come down, uh, I'll send you a picture of that very quick.
Okay.
Contact information.
Yeah, all right. We're going inside, we're opening the...
So, our next order of business, and we have a couple of department heads in here, let's see if we have any department head updates, and I see one back there, she's saying, I don't know.
I'm not sure I still count them.
You still...
Just finalizing our fleet auction, um, we brought in, as you guys know, just under thirty-one thousand, I don't know that we publicly noted, noted that, so, um, we have one, one unit still to be picked up, that's going back east, so, other than that, everything's paid for, picked up, so, we should be getting our check, I just sent our treasurer email to see if we've gotten our payment from Goddills, but it'll be coming shortly, so...
I think this year's quite a success story.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It's great.
It's huge.
It's great.
It's absolutely huge.
Yeah.
So, I have asked our ASD superintendent, Jack Thompson, if he wouldn't mind kind of giving us a little update, apparently, he had visited with, uh, Commissioner Kestner a while back, and, and asked to come, which, were you invited anytime?
Right, well, I, yeah. So... Sure. Again, Jack Thompson, the Lake County ASD, um, so, just a couple of good updates, um, we recently, a week and a half ago, two weeks ago now, hired a threat assessment coordinator, um, and when arriving in Lake County, uh, one of the conversations I had with the district's superintendents, um, and one of their concerns was how to deal with students that make threatening remarks, um, it was beyond the days of just being, for the principal to be able to say, oh, it's just boys being boys, don't worry about it. We have to act on stuff, we have to take it seriously, um, and so, in talking with them, they did not have any consistent way of dealing with this, it was, it was, each one of them kind of had ideas. Um, so, coming from the Valley, Salem Kaiser created a threat assessment process about fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, and that's been coming, it has been refined, and it's kind of becoming the national standard of what to do with kids. And, uh, so, um, they, they have one specifically for Salem Kaiser, um, and then Willamette ASD has a, a very similar one, that they have pared down to some extent due to the fact that, um, they don't have the same agencies as what Salem Kaiser does, um, and they're dealing with much smaller schools, and so the language, the stuff is a little different in the, in the threat assessment. Um, and so, what we're doing is, we hired a threat assessment coordinator, we've hired Ryan Tagg, um, and he is going to be, uh, working for us about eight hours a week, is what we're estimating that this will take. Um, he's going to training next week, uh, they're going to Salem, and getting trained on how to do this, and then he'll be coming back with that training, and he will be training all of the principals and superintendents in the county on how to use this process. So, basically what it is, you have a child that makes a statement on the playground, you know, you kicked me, so now I'm going to kill you, I'm going to stab you, I'm going to, you know, whatever the child may say. Uh, obviously, we have to take these things seriously, um, and so typically, what ends up happening is the school will, uh, for a violent threat like that, they will suspend the child, um, in pending a threat assessment, and so then, they will go through this threat assessment process, and typically, what happened, we'll have a, an administrator, a teacher, and the school has a counselor, someone of that nature, and then obviously, Ryan can also sit in on the, in the meeting if, if they feel like, um, it's something that they feel serious enough that they want to have him come and help out too. So, they go through this process, um, they look at the, it has a number of questions about the child, it asks questions of the parents, um, you know, do they have weapons in the home, does the child have access to the weapons, um, these kinds of things. Um, and after going through that process, ninety-nine point nine percent of all of these threat assessments are just kids being kids and saying things they heard on TV, um, and the child is, the parents come back in, the child comes in, they have a conversation, talk about what they've discovered, what they've, you know, gone through, and the child goes back to class. Um, so they're trying to, try to limit the amount of time the child is allowed to... So, they're trying to, try to limit the amount of time the child is out of the classrooms most as possible can. On that point, zero-one percent, that maybe would happen, when you have a child that, you know, says something of, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna, I'm gonna shoot you, I'm gonna kill you, and you have that conversation with the parents, and the parent says, oh, no, no, we don't worry about it. We don't have any guns in the house. We used to have a twenty-two pistol, but we haven't seen that for a long time. We're not sure where that's at, so we don't have any guns in the house, so we've got nothing to worry about and stuff. And the kid's got some ideas, maybe you found something written in his, in his binder or something of that nature. We've got some real concerns. Then it goes to what's called a level-two threat assessment. Level-two threat assessment is something that Ryan will then take to a, a team of individuals. We're thinking we're going to use the, is the stat team? Oh, is it, they have a, it's, it's the, it's the meeting that they have once a month with all the county agencies, from the health.
MBT.
MBT, thank you. Yes, MBT. So, he will take that threat assessment to that meeting and present what he has found out there. And then, the idea is that you then elicit assistance from those other agencies. If there's need for possible mental health counseling or mental health evaluation, we can talk about it there. If there's need to possibly go to the house and, you know, have the police see if we can find this missing pistol, then let's, you know, maybe we need to have that done. And so, you can ask these other agencies to, to assist in, in helping out this child and hopefully getting, again, preventative in having something happen. So, that's kind of where we're heading with it, and it will be consistent for all the different districts in the county, so all the kids will be treated the same. Obviously, every incident is, is different, but it, it makes it a lot easier. You always have a team evaluating what's going on with the child. It's never one person's opinion. And that way, God forbid, if something ever was to happen, you at least had multiple people in a team looking at the child and, and, you know, wow, you can't predict every single thing, but you at least made a team decision and not just one individual who's gonna stick their neck out and get hot.
Really, really interesting. As you get this set up, the one, one department you didn't mention, other than a BD and MBT time, would be our juvenile department, our, our youth investment through juvenile.
Right.
But there, there should be, I would think, a period in there someplace that would, would say, okay, we're not waiting until we go to MBT, we're gonna get a mental health assessment. It seems like there would be certain guidelines.
Yes, and there is, and that's Ryan's, and that'll be part of Ryan's charge, is if he, when we take a look at that and we're gonna move to a, a level-two, that'll be part of his charge, is being able to have a MBT team that he could call on the drop of a hat and say, hey, I need my threat assessment team to meet, we've got something really serious we gotta get together.
I, I really appreciate you putting this together. I, I think it's fallen into place with so many things of pulling the agencies together, people together.
Right.
For the right reasons and to be able to respond appropriately and give services to the people that may need them.
Yeah. It's, it's really important to have that MBT team process at, at level-two, because you begin to find out, when you start having this conversation about this child and this family, and then you find out you've got the sheriff sitting there saying, okay, wait a minute, you know what? I've been out to that house three times in the last month, or such, and such, or such. And then you've got mental health sitting at the table going, oh, wait a minute, wait a minute, we've got this going on here also, we've gotta get, you know, and then you've got juvenile sitting at the table, and they're saying, wait a minute, wait, he's my, he's one of my kids. I need to know this, 'cause now I'm gonna take certain actions. And it, it really helps things fall into place and put some supports around the child so that they're, you know, you can call supports or restraints, or sever defending, to keep them from ever taking any action and going back to the school.
So, will Ryan be, be considered, I guess, basically the convener to pull these, all the agencies and everybody?
Right, he'll normally go to the MBT meetings, but yes, he would be the convener if we had a, a sudden need. He would be the one to call those people together.
That is, that is such an important part, as I use different words, but we all have our silos, whether it's sheriff's department, it's the school, it's the hospital, or wherever, and a convener that can bring people together to sort of break through those silos.
Right. And that's one of the reasons we hired Ryan, is because Ryan being a state police officer, he does have those connections, and he is known by folks, and so, he knows who to call. He knows, you know, what people's jobs are, he knows what supports he can get and that kind of stuff. So, he's, he's gonna be fantastic for this position, so.
So, Commissioner Winters has been more involved over the years in these different areas, but Jack, I'll just simply say, as one citizen, I incredibly appreciate your thoughtfulness in recognizing even a small county can have these unfortunate, because we see it on TV all the time, incidents happen, and your proactive approach to ensuring, we'll never know for certain that we prevented something, but what you're doing is gonna give us the best opportunity to do so. And that can't be stated enough, how much we appreciate that.
And my five-year, my five-year goal in this is looking at some additional supports that we would have for schools. One is being able to provide some suicide assistance. We would have somebody in the ESD that if the school district has a kid who's talking about suicide, that kind of stuff, we have a one person that they can just call and go to, and that person's gonna have connections in getting that child hooked up with the right people and the families and everything that way. Also, the other one is a sexual incident response person, and what happens there is when you have a child come into a school who is a, a sexual predator. I know in my education, in going through college and all of my admin classes, they don't teach you about that. And so, you know, what does this school do? What, what is our plan? How do we put supports around this kid? How do we protect the kid? How do we protect the rest of our kids? We have to educate this child, they are, you know, they're, they're coming to our public schools, and these things, they happen. So, hopefully, again, in my next, in my five-year goal is that I have somebody in-house that if any school ever gets any child with this type of issue, that they would be able to come and give professional advice on how to set up a plan, what supports need to be in place to protect them. So, that's something else that this may expand into in this position. Starting with the threat assessments, and we'll move on from there, so.
That's, yeah, very good. Thank you very much, so.
Other than that, the ESD's doing great. We're, you know, all the things that we normally have been doing, we're doing, and taking care of kids and stuff, and helping out the districts, so.
Can you believe we're this close to Christmas break?
No.
It sounds like school just started. I know, your work is never, you never have a break, but just.
Well, the great thing is, see, I'm already in the two thousand eighteen, nineteen.
Yeah.
I mean, come January, we're doing budgets, and we're, you know, we're talking calendars for next year, and, yeah, so.
Well, thank you.
Goes by quick, so.
Appreciate it. Thanks for, thanks for coming today.
No problem.
Appreciate you being patient.
Oh, yeah, no, that's interesting.
Okay, Commissioner, we have liaison updates next before we adjourn, so.
Okay. I have one, just one question I want to bring up. This meeting with Mr. Schoolcraft didn't seem to be the right venue for that. Since we have an open physician now, the nuisance officer, and I think you've been clear about the role you wanted our nuisance officer to play, but would you like to just comment? We have a good case study here. Would you like to state as policy how you would have liked to have seen this handled differently by our nuisance officer?
Yeah, I'd love to. Well, I, I think it's, for me, Jay, it's, it's a really mixture of issues. And so, you know, the, I, I tried to say there, you know, with Jennifer's, and, you know, the nuisance part is a responsibility of Ted. He's the landowner in question here. How it got to there, you know, the worsening relationship between, in this case, law enforcement and our code enforcement is, is really important, because there were many issues at play. Older gentlemen were being threatened, at least one of them, by their version of what happened. People were camping on the land that they said they didn't have permission, that the landowner was giving them timelines to leave. All the while, there was a mess being created that we have no way of knowing if it ever existed before, but the statements of him that it was created by those people who didn't have a right to be there. I talked to Daniel a little bit about this yesterday, Daniel Tag, and I won't go into that right now, but there's so many laws out there governing an individual's lack of rights to their own property, that that becomes an issue too. So, I'm not really answering your question, Jay, because, you know, there's a lot of unknowns here. But I think the key part of this for me, and it was kind of mentioned there by Winfield at one point, is whoever's in that role for our county code enforcement nuisance needs to be able to communicate clearly with folks. So, you know, our intent, not just working with people, but it's communicating with people, and letters don't cut it, you know? For documentation purposes, that's important, but what's really important is developing relationships so people understand where we're really coming from, because you can't read between the lines in a letter. But you can develop a relationship with someone and get them to clearly understand, we're gonna document what's going on here, but more importantly, I'm gonna talk to you and communicate, and I need you to do the same with me, so as we move forward, we actually get compliance, because we're all in it together. So.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. Yeah, I'll call it a little bit more direct. I think that, um, we've only heard basically this one side, but what's expected is we've moved forward on the nuisance compliance, and we've gave direction that we want to work with a soft hand. Hand is, is that the nuisance enforcement person and their department needs to work hand-in-hand with other county departments, and this here is, at least through today, the flavor is, is that our departments work close hand-in-hand, these people wouldn't possibly have to drive all the way to Lakeview coming forward to board of commissioners. If there was documentation that could have been shared with another county department, the sheriff's department, i.e., then maybe it would have triggered or stimulated some different thoughts there. So, I, I think as we've got this up and going, and, and we are growing and learning ourselves, is that's my expectation, put a lot of time in this, but be as helpful as you can, especially with the depart, or with the landowners that want to get in compliance. And I, I think we missed an opportunity here where the two county departments maybe never communicated as well, so. Thank you, appreciate that. So, you want liaison updates? I'll go first, obviously. As you know, I've been pretty energized on the stepping-up program through NACO, and I can't speak to a whole lot as far as the stepping-up program through mental health help and other agents, other departments to help reduce the number of people end up in jail with mental illness. I've reached out to several different departments, agencies outside, you're close to the hospital, the town of Lakeview and others, is trying to pull, basically, I need a convener to pull people together to start trying to find efficiencies and make sure that our citizens that have either addiction and mental health problems get the services upfront as fast as they can, which a lot of times could reduce people who go to jails and other things. It's in the infancy stage, as I'm, I'm just getting this going. I've met with Trace, the director over the mental health, she's very much on board. We're moving forward on many different things. It's gonna be moving forward at a snail's pace possibly, because it's gonna take in a lot of, a lot of different departments, agencies and things, so try to keep you updated. I encourage you to go to the NACO website and look at that stepping-up program. They had a presentation at, at AOC convention on it. There is a resolution for Board of Commissioners to accept or prevent at some point if we get the partners all there, so look, look for any continued updates there. This Friday, I will be in Clamath. I'll start off with an executive board meeting on Area Committee on Transportation, that's our monthly meeting there, and then Regional Solutions is after that. Our Regional Solutions agenda is, is small branch, and Lake County has three of them in there that we have applied for, so I'll, we'll be at the Regional Solutions Board, we'll be going over those. I've been jumping another gear, jumping over into the renewable energy side, and with the solar backs and others, but mainly solar here in Lake County for non-regulated energy producers that don't have PUCs, trying to figure out them taking their power down our right-of-ways, their transmission lines and everything, right-of-ways, either county roads, alleys, platted roads, those type of things. We cannot charge, is what I found out on that, but we can set policy of how they will be placed, the depth they will, and all that. Interesting, there are a few ORSs about it. Talked with Ryan from AOC, the roadside guy, last week. AOC has been to legislature over the years, trying to say the county's need to be able to charge for these non-regulated, PUC-regulated energy, but it hasn't happened, so we have to go with what's there now. Do have examples in Sherman County, Jackson County, and Clamath County, but their policy is for their right-of-ways, so I'm gonna try to get that information out to you and Commissioner Kessler, and I think pretty much sooner than later, we need to set that policy. And one, one of them that, that we definitely need to, on the right-of-way, by ORS, all right-of-ways, as far as the power or utilities going through there, is those, that's supposed to be decided by the Board of Commissioners. We have basically set policy by a direction to our road official is, you sign, you have the permits, you sign them, and if there's something quite unique, bring it to the Board of Commissioners. I think it's time we gotta clear that up, if, if, and I'm fine with our road department signing those, but we sort of have that area that's okay, but what is one that has to come? We need to spit it out much better. So, I'm reading these ORSs, it's sort of interesting, there's some things I didn't know. So, working on that. Tomorrow, meeting in Paisley. I guess you don't need to ride there, you'll probably start out there.
Yep.
Denise and I will be there ten o'clock tomorrow for that meeting, and Thursday, I'm off, and I mentioned Friday, I will be in Clamath.
And you said you're off Thursday?
Yeah, that's the plan. I had planned to be the whole week off, but I changed that. I thought you needed a quorum to go do business.
Yeah, and it's been kind of a problem, so. Yes. Just kind of quickly, I just, I'll, I'll go back to the, when you were talking, road right-of-ways. Our road superintendent has got the crew and has had the crew working up in the summer and Silver Lake area, Summer Lake and Silver Lake area. Sounds like they're making some, some really good progress on some roads that are actually county roads. We did receive an email that I haven't been able to thoroughly digest this morning related to some town side roads in Silver Lake, but I need to follow up a little bit more on where, where we're at and what we actually can do. where, where we're at and what we actually can do or need to do up there, so just say that. I did chat with Maple Red, A O C, not nearly as much as, as you have on, on the stepping up, got just enough to have more questions than answers, so I'm glad you're, and I know you've been working with a, a group of folks to set up some of your things, so that's great, Commissioner. Leanna Weisberg will be here on Thursday, I'll be meeting with her in the afternoon. She's part of that case study group out in Northern California, she left a message this morning, they're on the, on their way up, and I'll be meeting with her at two thirty Thursday afternoon. Prior to that, S C O I, Executive Board, we have a meeting on some loan business, I think it's pretty standard, but we'll, we'll be meeting then. Be working with Jay, have been working with Jay since kinda pseudo-taking over the public health liaison on our work with the hospital and our public health department on looking at services and how those might best be provided going forward, something for all of us to eventually, sooner than later, be in the loop on what we think, and what we think is the best way to deliver service in that arena. I had a fellow reach out to me last week that's in the, well, two people to connect up, and I will just simply say, there's some positive momentum moving forward around potential second grocery store.
Oh, great.
Yeah, and I've got a, I've got a visit with him this afternoon. I like the idea, and of course, we need to involve our community in existing businesses, and it's not in the discussion so much, but in the awareness, you know, so that we know, our community knows we support our existing businesses, and hopefully, they can grow and, and be able to make improvements that are beneficial to them and the people who count on those services. But one of the areas that I think, and I haven't talked to Jeff recently, but over Howard Drugs, you know, and that support and possibility of additional services for pharmacy as we move forward, will be, I think, beneficial to, to his operation as well as the services at large, so that's one of those stay tuned, but it's starting to happen, so I just wanted to bring that out. The biggie for our Red Rock and all of us, you know, have had different kinds of conversations, all of us, you and I, with Jeff and others, but the P A Ds, the Public Activity Bonds that are in the federal tax plan, on the House side, their plan removes their activity bonds from the tax exempt status, which is exactly what, here in the state of Oregon, the Treasurer's Office and all those involved, our Wordy Business Group, Biz Oregon, and others, have been working with Red Rock on securing those a second time around, because there's willing suitors to purchase those out there. And the, the amount is significant, but it all kinda goes for naught, if for some reason, the House version of the tax plan were to pass. The Senate did not put that in there, they left the, the public activity bonds as is and the tax exempt status. I've been working with Senator Wyatt's office on ensuring, 'cause he's part of the conference committee, that he clearly understands that's the last hoop that our potential biofuel plant has to jump through, is securing those, and I've been assured that he's not only aware, but supports that, and so, I've also reached out to Congressman Walden's office, and to my dismay, I was surprised that they were surprised that that was an issue, but they now know it's an issue, and hopefully, it'll be addressed in conference, conferencing in the House and Senate on the two different tax plans, and we will see the light of day that it doesn't happen. What I didn't know is that they didn't, for some reason, pass the tax plan prior to the first of January, that wouldn't come into effect until two thousand and nineteen anyway, which is plenty of time. But on the other side of the ledger, just a, a quick update with, with the company itself, Red Rock, working with all of the entities, all the different organizations in the state that need to make this bond availability happen, they have a timeline, and they've scrunched it down to December twenty-eighth, because so many things they've had to run on parallel tracks, you might say, in order to accomplish getting it down and signed off on before the first of the year. Because after the first, any action that, that if, if Congress takes action to approve the tax plan, it wouldn't be effective, at least till the first of January. So we still have a window of opportunity to get these tax exempt bonds taken care of, and that's what they're really working on, the backup plan is that it isn't in the tax plan, so it doesn't affect them even if they can accomplish it by the twenty eighth of December, so.
One thing I forgot, on the mental health side, the State Review is here this week, they're doing that, I'll be meeting Wednesday afternoon with Camry.
Okay. I don't think I have anything else.
Jimmy's asleep back there, I think it's time to-
Yep, here he is.
Wake up, Jimmy.
We're giving to the good part of the journey.
Okay, well, if nothing else has come forth, which I don't believe it does, we will adjourn our work session at December fifth, two thousand seventeen, at approximately eleven a.m., and we will see you tomorrow at Paisley.